It is nine o'clock on Tuesday, May 28, 2019. I call the Potter County Commissioners Court to order. Today we have Gerald Chadwick with Central Actist who will do our invocation. So if you will please stand for that and remain standing for the questions.
Good morning. Good morning. Amen. Jesus rest in the Holy Spirit be coming in this morning with you. And once again, first asking if you could give us please of our sin against you. Thank you for your goodness to us, Lord. Will you give us your blessing, the Holy Spirit, to God? Lord, we are so thankful. We've got so much to be thankful for, first and foremost, for you. And you love us enough to come and die for us on Calip. Be buried resurrected again, if we might know that we have eternal life. Thank you, dear Lord, for that. Thank you, Lord, as we just been celebrating the burial day. But we live in America, dear God. You raised them here on the face of the earth. Thank you, dear Lord. Help us with all the problems that we face now. Lord, I don't know what among us Commissioners Court will be facing today. But I pray, bless the Lord, that you would guide them, you would give them your wisdom. Help them to make the decisions that they need to make. And, dear Lord, that you would be honored and glorified. In Christ's name we ask. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the repertory of justice for all. I am Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right. First thing I want to do today is approval of minutes from the May 13, 2019, Commissioners Court meeting in May 16, 2019, special permission. Nothing so recognized. Vouchers to consider next on the approval of payment of vouchers processed by County Attorney's Office. We have approved in May 8, through May 42, 2019. Check numbers, 1-858-793-185981. And wire transfers, 1-237-1242. And also, wire transfers, 1-238-1248. Is that correct?
It's just for killing, Lord.
Okay, okay. For a grade of $758,312 in 24 cents. I make a motion that we approve as presented.
Motion.
Make a motion. And second, I'll pay for your hand. Um, sorry, thank you.
I'm a free entrant, see court. Hey, say your own crutches.
Yes.
You don't have to come up here if you don't want to.
Um, there's nothing unusual on the entrance, okay.
Other than the fact that you have to go file a claim now because you're on crutches.
But it's not real unusual.
It's not unusual. Okay, so, so recognize. Do you want to talk about time clock? Then you can do it from there if you like.
Um, well, there's not a lot of new information on time clock. Plus, we are still planning to upgrade to version seven as soon as we can get everything caught up from the computer outage and everything closed. We are functional now, except this morning we can't clock in because we have too many weeks open and we're in process of closing two weeks now. So we'll have two weeks to get all of the computer virus stuff cleaned up and all the entries made there. But we are planning to upgrade just as soon as we can version seven.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on that?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kay. So recognize. Number five, depository for county funds to consider for approval. A, an order designating Emerald National Bank as depository bank for public funds held by Potter County and trusted registry funds held by the Potter County District Clerk and County Clerk. The fee security provided by Emerald National Bank as required by sections 116.051 and 117.025 of the Texas Local Government Code. And C, a bank depository contract between Potter County and Emerald National Bank. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are y'all today?
I'm very honored to introduce Darren Jeans, the Senior Vice President of Emerald National Bank. Darren, I'm honored to see you here this morning. And we're so grateful to Emerald National Bank. I do want to take a second to just let you guys know, had it not been for this man and his team and all the people that work with us at Emerald National Bank, we would not have made it through this difficult time. I mean, because of them, we were able to meet payroll. And they worked overtime, they stayed late, they were available anytime we needed them. I mean, I just can't say enough how wonderful they've worked for us during this time.
We keep refreshing.
That's good. The bank's been grateful to serve the county for years and certainly appreciate the opportunity to stay in contract. We enjoy working with Lynn and her team and all the fine people of the county and certainly appreciate the, appreciate the business.
Thank you, thank you. So, Lynn, do you have anything to add to the, to the, to the, to the, to the?
Everything is all good. We, we're piecing things together and finally moving forward. I'm not sure exactly, I mean, the goal by next month is to help Treasury report this morning and have reconciled and be able to balance. We still don't have everyone on board who can receive and, you know, give us the information we need. So it's getting there, but there won't be a Treasury report.
Okay. Okay, do you have any questions on any of those? We discussed this during the last Commissioners Court meeting, this just a contract, follow it?
Right. And this is a four-year contract. And they provisioned that we couldn't do it for another two years.
And the lack of fees, that there will be no fees charged by Emerald National, that was one of the items that definitely helped separate from the others bidding on the contracts. Our role. You have a motion in a second. I make a motion that we approve the order designating Emerald National Bank as the depository bank and to approve the security provided by Emerald National Bank and the bank depository contract between Potter County and Emerald National Bank authorized Judge Tignor as the signature.
We need to put the term before your term.
For a contract term, January 1, 2019 through June 30, 2023.
Second.
Make a motion in a second, all in favor, Judge Lynn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number six, policies and procedures to consider for approval and amendment to Potter County's policy and procedure, namely regarding compensatory time for jail members.
We're just asking to change the time on him to let him work a 12-hour shift out there. We're having a hard time finding people that want to come and work on a day. Especially the medical people because they could go and work just about anywhere in the world for a 12-hour shift. We've been without one position for almost two months. And I'm out of field and I still got one minute to kind of deal with. Well, there are people that are willing to come and work for us if we could change their hours and just start talking. They came up with a plan trying to move it over to 12-hour shift. We think that'll work and help us out a little bit as far as overtime and stuff like that as well. Kind of grow the policy for us and help to the best. It'll be a win for us.
So the policy change, Sheriff, is really for their comp time if you move them to a 12-hour shift. Is that right? How, how does it differ, Tad, from the request from Roden Bridge? I want to say six to eight months ago, if you will. I just want to make sure we're being consistent. I think you, Sebastian, that it's a 10-hour shift, if I remember, for your group?
It worked 40 hours a week on a weekly basis. This provides for, when the Fair Labor Standards Act, you can work a 14-day schedule. It can get pretty overtime comp to an after 86 hours. So expense out of this, as you said, of the bridge. The policy as it was written covers Roden Bridge because it's a 40-hour week. Just 40 hours in four days instead of five days.
Okay. And then this new policy, I, I don't have the, I don't have either the red markup or the original policy to compare it to, so I'm not clear about what has changed. And I'm specifically looking at the second paragraph where it talks about the structure and multiplying times 1.5. I just want to make sure we're being consistent across the.
We only addressed 40-hour weeks.
Now we're accommodating people who want to work 14 days.
14 days. Schedule is 86 hours before they begin to talk down.
It is, it's consistent in the sense that it's, in the sense that both, both schedules are treated appropriately here. But I'm very fairly concerned.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Yes, I'll move it. We approve the amendment to the county's policy and procedure regarding compensatory time for jail members.
Second, a quick question, if I may, Judge. Um, Tad, so I just want to make sure I'm following the, they'll earn three hours of comp time after 40 hours or after 42?
They work a 14-day period.
Okay.
Then again, earning comp time after 86 hours within a 14-day period.
So after 86 hours, then they'll start to earn comp time?
Correct.
And they'll earn three hours of comp time per one hour worked? Or help me understand that.
No, it's the same, hour and a half.
Okay.
Same.
And that's not any different than any department that works just the, the 80-hour, if you will? 40-hour working?
Correct. Well, it's different than, on the 14-day schedule, you begin earning overtime after 86 hours, which is more than 40 hours per seven-day period. I don't have an explanation as to why 30 hours is not invested that way.
The difference, the difference is not in the comp time that they earn, it's in the trigger comp time. And this is intended to accommodate fields where, like the medical field, where shifts tend to be longer than the ordinary 40-hour work week, 8-hour day. So the idea here isn't that they gain any more comp time than anyone else. It simply accommodates the sheriff's ability to keep people vanning medical division 24/7.
So the trigger in this scenario will be the 86 hours versus a 18-day shift?
Yes.
If you want a two-week time period?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Make a motion in a second, all in favor, Judge Lynn. Number seven, IT server room cooling unit should consider next on approval of a Lieber cooling unit installation for the IT server room funds of approximately $31,000 to come from contingency funds. Brandon's not here, but Kenny is. Hi there.
Hi. So this was what we were talking about before the, the jousting that happened. So, um, we've been very focused on our environmental server room. So, and it's still a problem. It still gets great degrees and that rains sometimes, so it's still a problem we need to take care of. Um, Nick helped Brandon get this pricing together. Uh, so this is for the units, the installation and wiring.
I'm just here in case they have a question.
I have a question.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Are you?
It may be, it may be the question I have. You go first.
I was going to say, do we have a plan, place that would comfortably move forward that's going to alleviate this?
I believe this is a plan. Is that?
I think I can take a little bit of that, Commissioner. So I think the long-term plan is whether we can relocate that IT server to the new district court facility. That's the long-term plan and what that might look like, right?
I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Nick.
I don't think it's going to be the whole room itself. I don't think it's going to be, you're not wrong or I?
That's correct. Because we're doing this. If we're spending $31,000 to add a cooling tower, is it going to be on the roof? Or is it going to be?
It's an actual physical unit in the room.
In the room.
And the idea behind this equipment, Judge, was this piece of equipment would be transferable to a new location, right? So it's not like you buy this piece of equipment. We pick a new location. It's just something we need to strategically think about. I don't, probably don't need to spend a lot of time talking about the importance of backups, right? And important of temperature in the room. But it's the long-term, we seriously need to consider that. It's not an ideal space. The short-term is that we bring in infrastructure, this being one piece of that infrastructure, to bring that temperature down so we can get good, clean backups of what was originally supposed to happen many, many months ago, if not close to a year ago at this point, right? So the idea with this particular type of equipment, Nick, keep me honest, even the spec was that this piece of equipment could be moved once a new location was identified.
We get out of the conversation, the problem with the guys that, that Westex had specifically spec for the CFM, right? You know, the airflow in square footage. So if we built a new room, it would have to be actuarial control to occur. So that's where I think it, maybe got lost in translation, you know?
In terms of square footage?
Right.
Okay. So that could be a conversation that we need to have around that.
Well, right.
In my mind, it's no different, Judge, than the property catty corner when the sheriff's office was demolished and we put, you know, landscape on that and greenery.
To, to take it down.
Right. So I think when we talk about whether a $31,000 piece of equipment, this is definitely short-term. The district court's project is two years down the road, if you will, right? So it's just something that I think we need to vet, we need to bring the temperature down. This is not a new item. We've been talking about this for quite a long time.
Right. And I think the square footage that we asked for in the building was around the same as what we have now.
One of the issues that Rachel Perry had was when they gave us the price, the request came in after, I believe, it was a mega did any increase. They, we also put that, what we currently have in Santa Fe, what we currently have, we can put in Santa Fe just to help. The new IT server room, and you put a functioning, not a certain way, you know, not, you would have to sort of that. Keep the one we have in Santa Fe, do what's supposed to happen with the larger server.
Well, I'd be happy to have those conversations with them, Judge. You know, be happy with.
We had one last week, Christina. And I was under the, under the question, as soon as we're doing this, we're not, put that room in there. We can always go back and.
There's, there's space allotted for.
Yeah, there's space allotted, but we, we, I just didn't.
But it wasn't in the cost of it.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. For now, we need to do this. I absolutely need to do this.
I guess.
Okay.
Okay. I'll root with that.
Number seven, we approved the cooling unit installation for the IT server room to come from contingency.
I need a second. Second?
Second.
Make a motion in a second. All in favor, Judge Lynn?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, number eight, Roden Bridge wage increase to consider in act upon our request and increase to summer lower hourly wage using budgeted funds. Sebastian?
Good morning.
Harry, please, sir.
This is something I should have done a long time ago. It just, I just overlooked it. But I have extra money in my salaries that's inside. And these guys, they make 10 bucks an hour. I wanted to pump them up to 12 bucks an hour. What they do is, is very important to the whole bridge department because if they're not there, then we have to put a full-time employee out there and that cuts back on maintenance. I have, I have to transfer at least $8,000 just to make sure that I have enough money in the temporary, some more salaries. But I have around $14,000 in that.
How many movers do you have?
At the moment, four. But I had one employee who's going to move on to another place today. Finished two weeks notice, so I'm going to have to, one of the summer movers is going to probably take that position and I have to hire another summer mover. It's just going to be an ongoing.
Are they hard to come by? Can you, are you?
Yes, they're very hard to come by. I just fill those positions with two kids that got out of college. I had, I only had two movers for this whole time. They've been doing a real good job because they've already made it halfway through the county. So now that I got four, well, I have three here momentarily, but, but I got four. They usually make, last year they made four rounds, I believe, of the whole county. That's a lot. Those guys really work hard. This is the same crew I had last year, so that's another good thing. If I can keep them coming back because they're retired, so they want to come back here and respond to my life.
I'm surprised you can hire people to 10 bucks a night.
Yeah, yeah, it is. And these are doing hard work. That's why I should have done this long time. To at least try to get some more people to apply for that position. I had it open for two months and I've got about two applications.
So Sebastian, the $14,000 that you have idle, is that because you have positions to unfold?
No, it's, it's because I have positions where we had everybody, the maintenance techs are all in one category. The operators in that category, the crew leaders and then supervisors. So that money's just idle. Doesn't serve a purpose because of, you know, how we are about asking for raises.
So you won't go into budget saying, we bumped up the salary, now we need a new price? You have enough in your budget to handle that change?
Yes, there's nothing that money's going to do except for, whenever I can find the summer mover, the foreman, that's the guy that finished two weeks notice today, the summer mover, uh, summer mover foreman. But I haven't given him the money yet because I just put him in that position. So once I find that person, I'll probably ask for him to raise it. But other than that, that money is just idle.
So then it, that'd be a, that'd be a constant four, remember, or a, a, a three?
For some, yes. I, I try to get four movers every year because we eliminated two at one point so that I can get the two full time.
Okay, move to increase the summer mover salary rate. Put the funds.
Okay. Make a motion in a second, all in favor, Judge Lynn? Thank you, Sebastian. Number nine, RFQ 1180-19 independent audit services to consider next upon awarding RFQ 1180-19 to those who are paying in advances as the highest paying one from. Senator?
Yes. Yes. Um, I believe we have five people on our committee that rated the, the floor that came in. And, uh, special people's had the, the hours and the, and the money that came in by poll of each of them. And they're all still local. And we can probably with our other ones.
So the other, the other firms here, these other three, they weren't, they're not local? They're all local? Which one was our existing prior to this?
Uh, it's the Ice Bailey.
Okay. That was our existing. Okay. Okay.
Move we award the audit service contract to those who are paying in advances. Second.
Make a motion in a second, all in favor, Judge Lynn? Um, zero. I need you. Number 10, fire station number one update, do you want to update fire station number one? Wait, he's going to, okay. I'll come on up.
I'll let them sit.
Okay. And I had it be? I don't know.
Morning. So just want to keep on through the process for you guys and, you know, then start this conceptually. Last month we talked about schematic design and this month we're on design development. You should have some packages, a package of the design development from us. And it's contractually speaking, it's going to be a very poor progress through the project. So it should, since you. You have, so you were sent the, you were sent the OPC and the master schedule. And one of the reasons why is, is remember last month I talked, this, the whole program statement is us collecting information and putting that into a book and packing that. So I will make sure you get the entire book, but it was also, it's just correction from last month of the schematic design. We basically added some more drawings and then at this point, we just try to hit the highlights. And really the highlights at this point is the schedule and the opinion cost and interchange of work in the, in the whole overall project. The easy one is the project itself. Really we didn't change anything. You know, last month we had a couple of needles going on my interiors and also we went over, we had committee meeting last week and the only real change on the whole entire site was removing a portion of a fence. Uh, and it was the one on the interior of the project. We still kept the exterior fence, the wood fence. So really to the drawings, there's not much to change, but we added a whole bunch of more drawings to the program because there's a lot of mechanical, structural, interior drawings into it. So it's probably multiplied, you know, to a threefold. So the highlights are really just looking at the schedule. There's not much to say on that either because we're on schedule today. These are kind of our DD available meeting. We have a 3D, 3D, 3D. And then we move on to our bid documents and we'll have another committee meeting, a couple more when we get into construction documents. And then we'll move forward to our August, if I'm not mistaken, August bid would be when our bid documents will be ready. So we are moving forward and there's no change in schedule. Moving to the OPC, uh, looking at it, and I think you have that in front of you. It's different from the one before. As we showed, we've shown these three OPCs, one during the conceptual, one through schematic design and this one DD. And what I'd like to do is I highlight the things that change in the other. So if you, if you want to look back at the previous ones, you can see the differences. It's at least easier for you guys to look at the differences. Uh, the very top one is going to be the construction cost, which is that's your construction cost of the contractor. You can see that kind of change and it went down. Uh, the main reason is because we didn't have a lot of changes. Owner requested changes or any modifications during this past phase. And we had a 10% contingency in the design contingency on that. But we bumped it down to now it's only has 5%. So because there's no changes, we can go back and evaluate that OPC and we can drop it because there really wasn't anything added in this last phase.
And why the drop? From 10 to 5?
Because we, we're not, usually when PSC starts a project, we have, we start off with a 15% design contingency and that owner can make modifications through the design. And it gives us that money to go to maybe the construction documents or it has to go to a special service. So as you go from phase to phase, and if we did a pretty good job, and I think we did during conceptual SDs, we didn't really add much in between SDs and right now. And that's why that 5% dropped off because basically the original price that we changed. And as you further go down, uh, we look at the, the other highlighted items and we change. Uh, the other highlighted items were that we changed on the owner items and we put it all into one lump number. So, uh, we had furnishings, we had the fence, uh, anything else, kind of, they called it their laundry list at the last fire station number three. So we clumped all that into one piece. That's the one underneath owner items. Uh, so we clumped that and we kind of gathered that information and stuck it underneath one. Uh, we also took some of the fence from the construction budget and stuck it underneath the owner items because it weird, it was almost like double dipping. We, we had construction costs in SDs, but the owner was going to provide that. So I took it out of construction cost and stuck it in with the owner items. So it was a wash and a decrease. Uh, and then when you look at our fee, our fee is based off of construction cost. So anytime that construction cost kind of changes, the design fees change also. Ultimately, look at the bottom line, it has gone down from the previous SDs, a couple hundred thousand, about 280,000.
So it's 3.9, around there.
Yes, and right now it's a 3.6.
That's a good thing. Eco, eco. No, you can, why I'd like to see a two in there somewhere. Preferably at the front.
I'd like to.
I'd like to.
Where I really want.
I don't have, we're going to continue to move forward. Charles Hurdle today with bid documents and ours. Any questions?
No questions for you.
Is, it's going to be in the corner of a new housing development.
Yes.
Is anyone from that development bit involved? We didn't hear any.
I am not, not in the committee. The one thing, you know, we know.
I just want, I just want to make sure that this looks nice so that it doesn't distract.
It's going to look so.
It should be really nice. But I, I just want to make sure.
So where can we have them involved?
I don't have, I don't have a problem with some, some, from the area company of the names.
No, it's, uh, when this land was donated, we looked into the.
No, it's a, when this land was donated, we looked into the, uh, community, it's gonna be built there. And, uh, we're not gonna keep with any restrictions on the, on the land or anything like that. Landscaping wise, it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be nice. I mean, that's, and that's the thing, that's one of the reasons for the fences, that will, uh, keep our property clear and separated from everybody else. And there's gonna be a little greater distance, uh, than there is a station three separated us from other property owners, so. Um, everything that we can has been done at this point to make sure that it, uh, fits right into the community, it doesn't distract from them.
Also Mike Vickers on the committee. Any committees of community meetings and somebody has that. Yes, please.
Yeah, from the, from the initial start, we've made sure we've included everything and discussed how it's gonna function.
I have, um, two probably odd questions, but they've happened to us in Potter County. So, um, I'm assuming that fire suppression is included in this project? I know we ran into that.
No, it's not.
Okay. And then the second is, I'm assuming all the ADA requirements have been reviewed, I know that kind of said the LEC. So there's not fire suppression included in our, our station?
No, because the storage system is tremendous and that's gonna add, I think it was nearly half a million dollars to the last station, so. It will be alarmed that, uh, it will not have A's for resources.
During the last station, we asked for a variance for that, exactly, so we'll do the same thing for this station also.
Is it odd though?
It's so odd.
Very odd, and it probably is hitting my heart because of what happened at our central station, right? It's probably why that's, it just always sound like.
It is odd, but it, it comes down to money and.
We can add that in there, oh no, well, I can find some D, D docks here.
Just the storage tank alone is tremendous, so it, it's a tremendous cost that we have decided that we would not undertake just because of the restrictive. I mean, most businesses out in the town, you're gonna ask for a variance unless they have occupants inside and are required by law to put them in, so.
So the lack of occupants allows us to be eligible for the variance?
Water is what happens. So if there's water available, it would be no problem, but the fact that it's gonna be a, a major undertaking monetarily, uh, was kind of cost prohibitive.
In, in a storage tank scenario, you'd have to empty that tank out twice a year to make sure it was, and the lives not ruined with this. It was a very large tank, because we have to have, you have to hold so much volume for so, for so long time, I think it's two hours. So imagine sprinkling that building for two hours long in the storage tank, then you have the maintenance factor of that also. We just asked for variance last night and we kind of got approved and we come up with a city and real and ask them and got the letter saying, and wait this, this, right? And you have the right to do that in, in building code, as a owner.
So the variance, what makes us eligible for the variance is it lack of occupants or lack of water, readily, readily available water?
Same volume.
Volume, okay.
Thanks, guys. Number eleven, employment items to consider an act upon involving employment items out of Roden Bridge. Number one, employment of Noah Rice, summer mover, at May twenty, twenty nineteen. And the resignation of Bernard K. White, area's office manager for the county extension office.
Approval of the employment items that's presented.
A motion in a second, all in favor of Judge. Uh, Nicholas, we have the Potter County projects, would you like to?
I, I don't, that I, other than the, the IT thing, that's really.
Um, could I ask two questions on the, um, concrete at the law enforcement center and then the vendor that was chosen for the handicap accessibility? At the law enforcement center, I'm not sure if that's a sheriff project or if that's a Nick's project.
Did you choose the vendor?
Yes, we picked the vendor. I guess there's no update, okay.
Not completely, no. Now, you're talking about the front doors?
Yes. As well as the, um, the concrete.
Concrete in progress, front doors is not, that project has.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Nicholas, you've noticed we finally put your last name.
I, I like that, and it's.
I'm so happy. Number, uh, thirteen, general report, Sheriff, do you have any, I'm just a total number.
Five hundred and twenty-three and eighty-seven.
Kenny, in the counties, none?
Number fourteen, closed session to convene and close meeting pursuant to Texas government code, section five-five-one point zero seven-six to review and report before we come. It is nine thirty-seven, six, that we will, um, process. No, closed session, we're back. Okay, it is, uh, nine fifty-eight, we are back in session, no, uh, no actions taken. Number fifteen, county insurance hours.
Yeah, one, uh, Tahoe, fifty-eight, office guy. Tahoe.
Oh, the Tahoe.
The Tahoe.
We said that on your, this guy.
That's so wrong.
Not the so wrong, I thought it was the Tahoe. I thought you said a pothole.
Okay, all right, so number sixteen, second session, we have none, agenda items for next time. We will tell you that we did your capital credits letter, so be thinking of, or you wanna give up, no amount. And then tomorrow we have payroll court, anything else else to think of for next time?
This is the, I will see.
I think it's about to run off, isn't it, Kenny? Are you kidding me? Yeah, um, it has been, it was sorted on the nanos, nanos. So that has gone to the governor's desk, as soon as he signs it, then it will be effective.
Okay, so if there's nothing else on the R, the R, I mean, very much.